Good evening. We call to order the regular meeting in West Valley City Council. We note that all council members are present and accounted for at our meeting. We will begin with an opening ceremony. We turn to Councilmember Karen Lang.
Would you please stand and make your allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Thank you. We have special recognitions at this point, and so I always look out and see who's here. And usually we look out and see a group of Cub Scouts or a group of Boy Scouts. We see a bunch of young men here. Are you with a particular group or ...?
With the Boys Scouts.
Boy Scouts.
Boy Scouts. Well, one of you needs to be elected to come and introduce yourselves to us, not by name, but rather by your troop, why you're here tonight, and maybe kind of generally the schools you attend, so we get an idea of where in the city you are. Do you have like a patrol leader, senior patrol leader, something like that?
All right. It's nice to be here. I don't actually know what our troop number is.
547.
547, maybe?
Okay.
So we are working on the communications merit badge, and part of the requirement is to come and attend a city council meeting. And we all live just over around the other side of Redwood area, and we attend schools in various parts of the valley.
Okay. Well, thank you for coming tonight.
Thank you.
Appreciate that. Okay.
We normally typically recognize elected officials as well. County Councilwoman Shereen Corbani is here listening.
Oh.
Sorry, I didn't see you over there.
I just leave it.
Okay. Thank you, because yes, we do. And if you want to say some comments during our public comment period, why, it's okay too. Now with that being our minutes of May 7th, we need a motion on the minutes.
I move for approval of our minutes. Second.
Any comments? Seeing none, all in favor of approving the minutes May 7th, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. It passes unanimously. The minutes are approved. And next we have a proclamation declaring May 10th as Kids to Parks Day. So, Councilwoman Lang.
Thank you. Whereas, May 18th, 2019, is the night Kids to Parks Day organized and launched by the National Parks Trust, held annually on the third Saturday of May. Kids to Parks Day encourages families to get outdoors and introduce a new generation to American parks. We should encourage children to lead a more active lifestyle to combat the issues of childhood obesity, diabetes, hypertension, and related health problems. The West Valley City Parks and Recreation Department is participating in the Park ... The West Valley City Parks and Recreation Department is participating in Kids to Parks Day and encourages the city residents to visit and enjoy the city parks. The West Valley City Parks and Recreation Department is encouraging residents to visit city parks, take a selfie with friends, family, or solo, and post it to our city's Facebook page to be entered into a drawing for prizes. So, that's you scouts. Now therefore, we, the city council of West Valley City, do hereby declare May 18th, 2019, as City to Parks Day in West Valley City, and encourage the residents of the city to take children in their lives to a nearby park.
Okay. Thank you. With that then, we go next to our public comment period. And I note, I believe that Kim is probably wanting to speak at our second one. We're going to have a public hearing on our CDPG awards, and so we'll do that separately from our regular public comment. But anyone is welcome to speak on any subject on our regular public comment. But the other one is directly related to the CDPG grants. Okay. With that then, we will, we do have Jim Beesock signed up before our public comment, and we'll see if there's anyone else. So, Jim?
I thought it was going to be the second one. Comments tonight are going to be on the comments of the city manager directed to me after my comments last week. I didn't take them any particular way, but other people have and brought it to my attention. It kind of affirmed what I was saying, is the way I looked at it. He took exception with words that I had used in the past and recently, such as liar, cash cow, circling the wagons. I could have, I could have used in the liar one, when the, I won't put the city person's name in it, gave false and/or misleading information to the city council in the study meeting, referring to a certain case that he should have known to be false. I mean, I could have said that. Once again, I have limited time. I don't have unlimited time like the city manager. Cash cow, I could have said large revenue source to the city. Circling the wagons, I'm going to go a little bit more detail on this. He took a big exception to that. The city manager in his presentation in the study meeting a few weeks ago on code enforcement stated the reason why a certain area was getting more violations was due to a prior code enforcement officer that was not doing his job. The city manager even picked the certain street that we're all real aware of, went down, took pictures to make his point. The city manager could have picked any street in the city and made the same point. Note, the code enforcement in this area had several citizens come and complain about him in this chamber. Then the grammar, or grandma, grammar, however you say it. When I was coming up with for the pet ordinance, I was getting numbers regularly from the shelter. Then I was stopped all of a sudden, and they said, well, it's because you have to do a grammar act. Well, now the rules have changed again. If I put one in for a lot of numbers and it came back, city manager made a comment about how he was surprised at how much they gave me. They gave me job descriptions. That was the only thing. I copied you guys all last week on that. The numbers that I was asking for, most of them should have been readily available. It would make it easier for monitoring code enforcement, giving job evaluations, reviews, and stuff like that. But as I was saying on that thing, I feel that the grammar act thing is being changed because the numbers for the pets weren't readily reports. It was something that they had to punch up on the computer, and they weren't always exact. So it's like the rules kind of change when I ask for a lot of detailed numbers. You know, so on that one. And like I said, those numbers would make it a lot easier to review code enforcement. Then the other thing that he talked about, and on the cash cow parts of the city, there's nine code enforcement officers, which I found out on my own, not through my request. If running, just using some numbers, if they each wrote one violation an hour, about a 40-hour week, working 50, 50 weeks a year, just getting one week off, one week for six, that would be 18,000 violations. Well, we know that that's not happening. So cut it in half. They're writing two, you know, one violation every two hours. Drops it down to 9,000. Even cut that in half again. They're writing 10 violations a week, a 40-hour week. That's 4,500 violations approximately, which is, in that same study meeting, the city manager kind of commented that's right around what the number is. Sitting in some of the hearings, the average fine nets when it goes to assessing is about $1,200 or higher, goes up higher. Now, of those 4,500, less than 10% or around 10%, I bet. But once again, these numbers aren't available, so I'm just running them out there. Using that 10% number, that comes out to over a half a million dollars coming into the city. To me, that's a large revenue source. I called it a cash cow. If the real numbers were available, I could have given you real numbers, but you know, just using what I could put together, that's it. And I just want to put on the record, I am not against code enforcement in any way. I'm 100% for them. My issue is the notification part of the code enforcement. And I still think that the city should have to approve notification before they assess a large fine, even if it's $1,000. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else here to speak in our general public comment period? Okay. Please come forward. State your name and your address, just for our records, if we need to follow up.
Okay. I'm trying. You guys understand me? Okay. My name is Rodrigo Alvarez. I live in Westlake Row. I don't remember the south. Okay. Years, I think one year to go. I'm coming here for asking for to put up bomber on the street. You know that, right? Okay. So the city told me, he said, the city don't have money for to put a bomber, sorry. So they guys give me the papers for, call it, all the sign it for the neighbors. So, back again. Okay. Pass one year more, was a waiting. So it's nothing. And my wife, she going last week to the city, went pay the garbage. Okay. Somebody told her, it's me, I'm coming here for talk to you guys. I need a bomb. I need a bomber on the street. I have new neighbors that's driving too fast on the street. Last Friday, almost one car hit the little boy. So it's a lot of kids over there on the Westlake Row. This is my comment. And I'm with my wife asking, trying to cheap pay for one bomber. She said, no, city's saying no. There's only comments. Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else? If I miss any, you can help me point them out. Just as a general comment for our scouts tonight, the opportunity for people to come and speak can speak their mind clearly, and there are many points of view. So you'll see, you've seen some of that tonight, where discussion takes place, and that's the real world. And so, but we do kind of hold that, that what someone says, they can say. And we don't prevent them from saying anything if we don't happen to like it. And I'm not saying we don't like what someone said, but I'm just saying, you know, it's free and open. And that's kind of standard for all public meetings, for there to be a public comment time. So seeing no one else here for just general comments, we'll move on, close that, go to, any comments from our assistant city manager here tonight?
I would like to just ask Mr. Alvarez if he could leave your address with our recorder, if I can check into that.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. And then to the council. Any comments?
I have a short one.
Sure.
I just want to say thank you, the people here from the Jessup field scout, and I'm so grateful to see them here tonight. God, I haven't allowed tonight, and hopefully you're going to see them often.
Yeah. Good comments. Stay involved. Okay. Next, we go to item eight, where we have a public hearing. What we are doing is we have, we'll take comment on an item called the Community Development Block Grant and our proposed use of those funds. If I can get that up again. And these funds come from the federal government, U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. This particular program provides funds, and they're allocated for some general purposes. For example, up to 20% can go for administration operating costs. 15% may be allocated to public services projects. And so various requests are made for those funds. The city has set up a committee to review those requests and make recommendations to the council. They have made those recommendations, and that is attached to our agenda tonight as where we will allocate those funds. So we will consider Resolution 19-45, which allocates those funds. And the council will vote on that most likely in just a little bit. But before we do, now that we know what's before us, we will take public comment. And so I know Kim is here to speak to us on that, so we'll start with her and any others who might be here.
Thank you very much. And I'm Kim Korea with the Inbetween, the hospice for the homeless. And I want to thank the committee for all their work and recommendation. You know, the Inbetween started four years ago as a pilot project in the old convent with 16 beds. And we had a vision, you know, we had a vision for our greater community all along the Wasatch Front, that we would take care of each other, that we would take care of people who couldn't take care of themselves, especially those who were dying and living on the streets, that everybody who was on the streets with a terminal illness would have access to hospice care, which can only be provided in a home. So people on the streets were lacking access to hospice care. We didn't know where it would go, and we quickly found out that demand far exceeded our capacity. And last year, we were able to relocate to the Sugar House area with now 50 beds, 25 of which are licensed by the state as an assisted living facility, which allows us to take people who are even more medically frail, who need help with things like bathing and dressing and toileting and eating, taking their medications. And of course, at the end of life, everybody becomes bedridden. And now we're actually state licensed to be able to carry, provide the services that they need through the end of life. So it's been a big year for us, moving and expanding. We went from about eight staff to 20. We worked a lot of hours over there, and we still are really dedicated to helping this population. And your funding is really important because we recently had a big grant request in at the state level, and it wasn't approved. So now we have to make up that money in other ways. And so again, thank you for your support, and I'd be happy to answer any questions if anybody asks me. Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else here to speak to, yes. And introduce yourself.
Hello. My name is Becky, and with YWCA Utah, we are truly grateful for West Valley City's generous recommendation of $11,000 to support the YWCA's Women in Jeopardy Program, a 181-bed licensed domestic violence shelter for women and children. Requested funding would help improve client outcomes by providing salary and benefits for essential shelter staffing infrastructure. Domestic violence continues to be a severe and costly health crisis affecting one in three Utah women per lifetime and accounting for one-third of Utah's sheltered homeless population. Annually, West Valley City residents constitute approximately 10% of those served through the Women in Jeopardy Program. In addition to receiving immediate shelter, three hot meals per day, personal necessities for themselves and their children, access to urgent medical care, residents receive individualized case management support, economic-related assessments and counseling, and assistance with housing coordination. Last year, the YWCA's Women in Jeopardy Program provided 38,967 nights of service to 355 women and 484 children, including 80 individuals from West Valley City. Your funding is critical to helping the YWCA sustain its important programs for domestic violence survivors and their children. Thank you so much for your continued partnership and support.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? Yes.
Hi. My name is Bobby Lord, and I'm from the Family Support Center. And I just wanted to start out with thanking the mayor and the city council for recommending us for funding, for the West Valley Crisis Nursery. Child abuse is a serious issue in our county and in Salt Lake. In West Valley City alone, there were 755 confirmed cases of child abuse, confirmed victims of child abuse last year. And prevention is the primary reason that we have the crisis nurseries. Every year, in Salt Lake County, we have three nurseries. We have one in Sugar House, one in West Valley, and one in Midville. And we serve over 9,000 children visits a year. So we serve a lot, and our goal is to get them out of those hard situations, give the parents a break, so they can be away from danger while they're in a place where there's loving providers. They have everything that they need, food, clothing, anything that they may need during that time. The West Valley City is actually our most utilized nursery. It is the only one that's open 24 hours, seven days a week. So it is used, is always there, available. And we just want to thank you guys. Your funding is very important to us and directly impacts the number of people and the hours we are available. Thank you.
Thank you. Any others? Those are three examples of items that are on our grant list. We have a total of, it looks like about 22 different items that we will be funding. So you heard a good sample of those. So with that, I will close the public comment period and bring it back to the council for consideration of Resolution 19-45.
I move for approval of Resolution 19-45.
Properly before us, any further comments before we, yes, councilman?
I just want to make a comment that, you know, you came and thanked us, and it's super easy for us to say yes or yay. But you're doing the hard work, so thank you. Good job.
Very appropriate. Thank you. With that then, we will turn to our city recorder for the roll call vote, which is designated by state law. So we have to do a roll call vote.
Councilman Vicky Simonu?
Aye.
Councilwoman Lang?
Yes.
Councilman Buehler?
Aye.
Councilman Hume?
Aye.
Councilman Christiansen?
Yes.
Councilman Rortel?
Yes.
And Mayor Bigelow?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Next, we go to our item nine on our agenda, ordinance 19-12. This is where we are modifying our city code to reflect some changes to our parks and recreation consolidated fee schedule. We have many things in the city, especially like at the fitness center and in our parks and golfing, where we do charge fees for services that they receive there. And so we have a set of, or a schedule of fees that are charged. We're changing some of those, consolidating some of them, eliminating some, and giving more flexibility for minor program changes to the parks and recreation fee schedule so that, you know, if it's a minor change, that doesn't come to us. And so that proposal is before us. I don't know if any of you want to highlight any particular changes, but that's in general what we're doing. And I think I will mention, just for the scout benefit, that this will be the second time we have discussed these items. We have a study meeting where we go through in detail. So sometimes we don't make a lot of comments or ask many questions because we've already been through it once. But we do need to do this officially to adopt or not proposals that come before us. With that then, to the council. Mayor, just as a point of discussion, as we were discussing this in our study session earlier tonight, we changed the word citizens to residents at the end of the resolution. In the third whereas, we also have the word citizens that I think should also be changed to residents. So, just a, just word smitting, nothing. Well, what we'll do officially is when we make a motion to adopt it, we'll adopt it, the document with that one word change. Then I would make that motion, we'll adopt the document with that, those two changes that we discussed. Yes, with the two changes for citizens or residents. Properly before us, any further comments? Seeing none, to our city recorder.
Councilman Rortel?
Yes.
Councilman Christiansen?
Yes.
Councilman Hume?
Aye.
Councilman Buehler?
Aye.
Councilwoman Lang?
Yes.
Councilman Vicky Simonu?
Aye.
And Mayor Bigelow?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Okay. Next, we go to resolutions. We have Resolution 19-46 to award a contract. This is for the repair and resurfacing of tennis courts at Centennial Park, Parkway Park, and Westview Park. This will be for $122,170. Comes from the parks maintenance budget. And so we will get, we are hoping to get a grant from the United States Tennis Association to assist in this cost. Our tennis courts have obviously have used over time and being exposed to the elements, generally wear down and sometimes crack. And so we need to occasionally take efforts to refurbish those. And so we can do all of them, but, excuse me, but these are the ones that have been selected at this time to be taken care of. So that's the introduction to the council.
For approval of Resolution 19-46.
Second.
Properly before us, any further comments?
I'm just add that because pickleball is such a hot topic, that this is not just the resurfacing, but also a centennial converting, or at least lining up the pickleball and the bar for those who like that.
All right. Thank you. With that, to our city recorder for the vote.
Councilman Vicky Simonu?
Aye.
Councilwoman Lang?
Yes.
Councilman Buehler?
Aye.
Councilman Hume?
Aye.
Councilman Christiansen?
Yes.
Councilman Rortel?
Yes.
And Mayor Bigelow?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Next, we have Resolution 19-47 to implement a public records management solution using a program called OnBase that we are already using for other things within the city. This will add this other function, and the function specifically is related to the Government Records Access and Management Act, known as GRAMA, to provide a process where it is, where we are able to track those requests and respond to them in a more orderly fashion and ensure that they are followed up on. GRAMA is a program put into, that has a dual purpose. One purpose is to make sure that government entities do not restrict access unnecessarily to public records. There are some records that are not accessible, especially if they disclose personal or confidential information that could be harmed to an individual. The second portion of that is to protect government entities from requests that are frivolous or that may take frivolous, or that may take excessive amounts of time. There have been occasions, and this has even happened with reporters, where they request records in significant volumes, and in fact, have on occasion in some cities tied up staff for months on end. And to prevent that, then we're allowed to do, charge for certain aspects, and to only provide the information that is there. The city does not do additional research, or provide special reports that are not already in existence. So generally speaking, that's the general purpose of it. It has been beneficial, I think, on both sides, generally speaking. And if there is a difference of opinion, there's even a appeals process that people can go through. With that introduction, by the way, let's see, $40,328 come from our existing budget. I think I covered most everything there. To the council.
I move for approval of resolution 19-47.
Second.
Okay. Any further comments? Seeing none, we'll send it to our city recorder for the roll call vote.
Councilman Norfeld?
Yes.
Councilman Christensen?
Yes.
Councilman Hume?
Aye.
Councilman Buehler?
Aye.
Councilwoman Link?
Yes.
Councilman Petis Manu?
Aye.
And Mayor Bigelow?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Next, we have our resolution 19-48. This again is to award a contract to Lyndon Jones Construction for what we term the Derby Street Storm Drain Project. This is for $365,000. It comes from our storm water utility account. And they were the ones who made the, or received the bid due to the amount that they had proposed for the cost of the project. This is in Chesterfield subdivision, there are a number of, excuse me, drainage problems there, and some of that has never been drained. It was pooled by the side of the road, and so, we generally have a number of these projects every year, depending on where we encounter problems. And so, this proposal will run along, let's see, from Parkway Avenue to 2400 South, and even through some private property, and it'll put it into the storm drain, a new storm drain there. So it will solve some problems. That's the introduction of the project to the council.
I move the resolution 19-48 for approval.
Second.
Properly force, any further comments? To our city recorder.
Councilman Petis Manu?
Aye.
Councilwoman Link?
Yes.
Councilman Buehler?
Aye.
Councilman Hume?
Aye.
Councilman Christensen?
Yes.
Councilman Norfeld?
Yes.
And Mayor Bigelow?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Okay, next we go to resolution 19-49. This is to approve an agreement with Rocky Mountain Power to bury power lines along 4100 South in West Valley City. This will not remove all power lines, but where we can, especially with work going on on 4100 South, and that'll be a major project throughout the summer. We've already started doing a number of things. We've actually been working on different aspects of it now for a while. Last summer, we wanted to make sure we get a number of projects done that related even to storm drains and that, so we didn't have to tear up a brand-new road. And so, we hope we've got all of those done, and hope there are no emergency breaks that we have to do anyway. So, $164,342 from state transportation funds, and that is the issue before us, to the council.
I move for approval of resolution 19-49.
Second.
Any further comments?
Just one, before everybody who lives along 4100 gets their hopes up for burying all those power lines, these will be the ones that cross 4100. So, there'll still be lines along both sides, but the cross lines will be buried.
Thank you. Good clarification. Saved us.
That's because I live there.
Yeah. Several phone calls. Okay. Then with that, to our city recorder.
Councilman Norfeld?
Yes.
Councilman Christensen?
Yes.
Councilman Hume?
Aye.
Councilman Buehler?
Aye.
Councilwoman Link?
Yes.
Councilman Petis Manu?
Aye.
And Mayor Bigelow?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Next, we have two items on our consent agenda, resolutions 1950 and 1951. These are simply minor items that don't involve typically money, things like that. So, more straightforward, these are ratifying city manager appointments of Jim Coleman to the Professional Standards Review Board, and Jim Bisok as a member of the Clean and Beautiful Committee. That's all that they are, so, and we typically handle those as a group, to the council.
May I move for approval of the two items on the consent agenda?
Second.
Okay, seeing no further discussion, to our city recorder for the vote.
Councilman Petis Manu?
Aye.
Councilwoman Link?
Yes.
Councilman Buehler?
Aye.
Councilman Hume?
Aye.
Councilman Christensen?
Yes.
Councilman Norfeld?
Yes.
And Mayor Bigelow?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
We have no need of a closed session, so maybe if I just smile and look at the council, someone will make a motion. Motion to adjourn. All in favor of a adjournment, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no, we're adjourned.